Morning, everyone. We're running 10 minutes late, so I'd like to move on. Please, good to see you all. Margaret Gibbs, we welcome you. Margaret's going to give us a brief synopsis of the land of Lake Stalox Passage and Essex County Arts Council.
Good morning, everyone. I'm just going to give a brief update on some of the projects we've been working on in Essex County, Lake Stalox Passage, who've been working on. And I wanted to highlight three in particular. I wanted to mention the Heritage Center Strategy, which we've actually been doing when I was at the museum, we were doing it with Lake Stalox Passage up to eight years ago, and we're trying to continue that program. The Lake Champlain Blue Way Trail and Waterways of War, Turning Point of the American Revolution. The Heritage Center Strategy is really about building partnerships between the museums and the libraries and the other cultural groups that are in communities. And the focus has been on building the organizations, doing whatever we can to build the organizations through their management, their leadership, their programs, exhibits, events, and community outreach, their volunteer programs, most of them have volunteers. So we have been doing a survey of the museums and other groups, the historical societies, to get an idea of what they see as their future needs for workshops. And so far, they're saying many of them are very much in favor of this collaborative approach of working together, because the small museums especially, they don't want to have to be competing, you know, they would much rather be encouraging people to come to the community and then sending them on to the next museum and the next community. And they're all only too willing to do that, so that if somebody goes to the Underground Railroad Museum in Keysville, that they'll be sent then down to Willesboro and to the museums in Willesboro, they'll be sent to the Westport Heritage House, and then Iron Center, and then Tycondroga. So this way, all of these groups are working together, they know what other people are doing, and they know that if they send somebody along this route, that they're more likely, especially the cultural heritage tourist, who is a tourist who often has a little bit more disposable funds, and they like having a reason to stay in the area. So it's not like just coming to one single museum. Just quickly, some of the workshops that we've already offered, we offered one at Osable Chasm last fall that was about people's volunteer programs and how to set them up, how to recruit, how to retain volunteers. We did another one on facing the new legal accounting governance rules that New York State just introduced a year ago that are in effect. And this is pretty startling for most small groups, you know, the bigger nonprofits who have accountants and have lawyers easily accessible can implement this, but the smaller groups often aren't even aware that these requirements are in place. And then we did something on collections care, which is always an important theme. In the fall, we're doing a couple round tables, and one of them, it's again, to bring this whole group of museums together to make a thematic experience. So we want to work on looking at the Industrial Revolution from Mariah to Troy, because we know that the mining story is fascinating, and then if you see what actually happened when the war moved out of Mariah and went down to Troy, and a lot of the manufacturing was there, it's sort of making those connections. Just briefly about the Lake Champlain Blue Way Trail, this is a collaboration with the Town of Crown Point, and what we're doing is we're interpreting landmarks along the lake shore and Lake Champlain from a boater's perspective. So it's kind of following a trail, that's actually a water trail. And we've spent a year collecting information from local historians and community people about some of the unknowns, you know, some of the things are obvious landmarks, but other things are kind of hidden treasures or things that wouldn't ordinarily be known to a boater. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is this Waterways of War, the Turning Point of the American Revolution. And this is a two-day tour that's delivered through a mobile app, and it's from Plattsburgh to Saratoga, and it tells the story of Burgoyne's 1777 northern campaign on Lake Champlain. So through this process, we are featuring the places in Essex County, featuring destinations that are part of the story, which include Willesboro, Crown Point, Tycondroga. And so it's, as a two-day tour, people are encouraged to spend a night in Tycondroga and then continue from there down to Saratoga.
Is that a vehicle tour?
It would be, yeah. Vehicle tour, yes. So those are kind of the highlights of our three projects that we're doing now. Does anyone have any questions?
What is your volunteer base like? Because, you know, it's essential to any successful organization. I'm curious, has it been growing, your volunteer base?
One of the things that we found was that the groups that had a fairly structured program for volunteers tended to have the most volunteers, which was really interesting, where they treated the volunteers almost as, I guess you'd call them unpaid employees. And they, some of the communities, I guess I could point out, Westport in particular, they have like 35 volunteers who are willing to operate the Westport Heritage House. Willesboro has a good base of volunteers, and then other groups are trying to find their way. So what we're trying to do through the workshops is help them design a program that would build it.
I think that's essential. As in, like, why couldn't we survive without our volunteers?
Yes.
From the museum to events?
Yes.
Did you want to talk about the Arts Council?
Yeah, and again, I'll be very brief. Yes. So the Essex County Arts Council awarded its CAP grants, and these are Culture Assistant Program Grants, and they are funded through Essex County, and there were 20 organizations that received funding, and I think in the report you can see the list. And in general, the awards ranged between $250 and $1,000, but many of these groups felt that even that small amount of money could make the difference between whether they could do an event or not, and many of these events are happening now in the summer. So I don't know if anyone has any more questions about that?
Anyone have any questions for Margaret?
In Crown Point, we were first with the iron industry, I do believe, in Essex County. There was, at one time, a railroad that went from La Salle, Montevideo, to Canada. Many areas of that railroad are very walk. I would like to think that sometime in the future, that there might be mines made available to establish a trail to follow along this railroad. There are some terrific architectural features here that was all done by hand, and they still stand with a lot of strength.
Yes.
And of course, if it were to ever start, it would be finalized at Penfield Museum, which also is probably the features of the iron industry.
Yes, yeah, that would be a great trail.
But that, it would take a lot of money, it would take a lot of planning for this to occur. I think it would be quite beneficial.
And specifically, you think featuring the history that's along the trail would be worthwhile?
It would be several miles long, but I think it would be.
Yeah, yeah, that would be really good.
Something to think about?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Jody?
I have a question.
All right, any questions for Jody regarding industrial development? When is your, when are your scheduled meetings, are they quarterly?
Monthly.
Monthly, okay, because I just saw the Essex County IDA meeting for April the 30th. Was there anything after that?
Yeah, you should do a name.
You just said a special board meeting.
No, we need monthly and then special.
Okay. Or even June, did we get one for June?
Uh, soon we will get, until July.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Jody? Thank you. Mike, maybe resources, and you have a couple of referrals you throw?
It says Town of North Alba, Town of Westport.
That town's North Alba.
Town of Westport is Camp Dudley. Yeah, it's for the construction of a leadership barn.
All right, I do have a referral here this morning. Town of North Alba in regards to a 21-lot subdivision. The application does not have an impact on county facilities, and a letter of no impact is recommended. I don't have the other referral that's listed on the sheet, so I apologize.
Do those referrals normally pass to Highway, too?
Yeah, they do, and the issue with that one that I see is that if there's a special permit, the permit was probably filed with Highway, meaning that it's probably joining one of our roads, so it could have a potential impact depending on the development.
Yeah, it does join a county highway.
Right, so that would be my concern, and if they're getting a special permit, then they're following the proper procedure anyhow, and our county engineers will let them know what they can and cannot do on that area, so.
So it's normal to come here before you're knowing that?
Yeah, usually I get them, I didn't, I didn't see that one.
Sent it over Friday afternoon.
Well, that would be why I haven't seen it, because Friday afternoon, I wasn't here, I was on vacation last week.
All right, I need a motion to approve that referral. Mr. Moore, you have a second. Mr. Devoe, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? That was your answer. Close, thank you.
CFA applications due July 31st, we have 11, and that number's growing, as I talked to a couple of you this morning, and I see you, it's a couple other pointing at me, so we're quite busy trying to get those done for you guys. Next month, I'll detail what projects were actually applied for, dollar amounts, funding agencies, those types of things will be detailed for you in next month's reports. The Smart Girls contracts, I know quite a few of you have those, those are moving forward through the Grants Gateway System. It's a little slower, it's a new system by the state, but they are moving forward, and you should be getting those any day. Use Bureau, two weeks ago, we held our annual municipal training at Elizabeth Town Central School, we had 60 participants. The agenda was as follows, we did planning camp activities, recognizing drowning victims, lost swimmer and camper plans, public health came in and did some stuff on ticks, rabies, those types of things, we appreciate them partnering with us on that. We did employee expectations and day camp safety. It's really a good training for the first-time employee. They seem to benefit quite a, quite a bit from that, so we did do that. We also had four days of CPR, first aid training, and I think our problems were minimal this year, I know there were some, some towns had, you know, some problems like we normally do, but I think it was much better as a whole, getting the day camps up and operating. So if you did have any issues, let me know, and we'll try to make it better, we're always looking to improve.
Hey Chris, it's Mike on the CPR train, I had this discussion with you, and I also talked to the new director at the Department of Health, who I might add has been extremely helpful, she really has, regards to our application anyway. But the online courses, can we get a list of who's accepted, you know, are they accepted, are they not accepted? We had two counselors that took the course online because they were going to be, not be available for the day of the course.
Yeah, yeah, I can tell you that the great majority of those are not, I will get you a list of allowable courses and not allowable courses, there's not a lot of them. All I can tell you is the ones I do give are allowed by.
That could be a local policy, I mean, we could just state to town board that, you know, we're not going to accept online course, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yes, Gary?
Yeah, Mike, if we can go back to this Town of Westport application, if we don't act on it, it's automatically going to be approved, right?
That's correct.
After 30 days, we only have 30 days.
Well, I realize that, but I didn't know if they had a time issue, they didn't wait.
Yeah, Dudley will have, well, no, the 30 days won't be a problem, and I don't think Highway's going to have any problem with this.
Yeah, as I read it, it's the construction of a leadership barn for Camp Dudley.
Yeah, I'm looking at this quickly, and it's not an issue, but you're both absolutely right, if we don't comment within 30 days, it's automatically a no comment. The one time when we would want to comment is if it could adversely impact some of our property, and I.
And my only concern was if they wanted to start this construction in two weeks, while it's the middle of the summer or whatever.
Sure, you're right.
That waiting 30 days would be an issue, but other than that, I don't really care.
I don't think with them it's an issue, we, you know, we can tell them it's going through the process, and I think they've still got some things to put together that they can do.
Yeah, I, this isn't going to adversely impact any county property, absolutely not.
All right, so it's something you want to do, move it?
Yeah, we could recommend and move it, that would be fine.
We have a resolution approving the referral for that special permit application, moved by Mr. Collins. You have a second. Mr. Mary, do you, any further comments or discussion on the referral? All in favor? All right, still move, thank you.
The only other thing I have left to report on, we do have seven food sites open this year throughout the county, there are Elizabeth Town Lewis, Mariah, CD Tech, Bloomingdale, Petrova Elementary, Crown Point, and Willesboro. On Stop DWI, we have, we had six after-prom, non-alcoholic applications that were approved by the DWI Committee, and the communities were Crown Point, Saranack Lake, Shroon Lake, Keene, Willesboro, and E-Town Lewis.
Those food sites, Mike, are they, how is that going?
It's fantastic, it's one of the best programs, I think, we run in the Use Bureau, quite frankly, last year, we served 14,000 lunches, about 8,000 breakfasts. In order to qualify, you have to have 50% of your school district receive free and reduced lunch, or of your enrolled students in camp, so there's a couple different ways you can qualify a camp to operate. You know, for a lot of those kids, that may be the only meals they get during the summer, so it is a critical program, and those of you that have been involved in it probably have heard those stories, and it really does do a good job for those young people.
So is that program funded by New York State?
Yes, Department of Education, fully funded, if you qualify.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that program or any others, anything else for Mike? Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Steve Lamarr? Jump in your step, it's good to see you.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Hopefully, it should be pretty quick and easy, I have handed out a monthly update of activity, and I'm happy to say we are officially pretty well done with stocking. Seemed to take forever this year because we had a lot of fish and we got a late start.
With all the rain and all the fishing Keysville?
But everything's going well, anybody's got any questions for me?
Yes, Bill, I just wanted to thank Steve for the, for each and every one of the 25 trump that were stocked in Tycondroga.
That's 25 more in Mariah.
You guys, I guess so. This is, this is just the recent report, at the end, you'll get a report there, everything that's happened this spring, what I do is I try to give a monthly update. I was going to buy.
Yeah, anything else for Steve? Thank you.
Thank you.
You got Aurora's report, I believe, I don't see her here, so Cooperative Extension, Linda? You all let us here, come on up, Linda, we welcome you. You know anyone in the show?
My feet is dead.
Well, intimately. You all know, you all know, Linda? We'll just close here. Sean, better half.
Yeah, that's working.
Much better.
So Anita's out of town today, she's president of the New York State Association of Agriculture Agents, and the national convention for conferences in South Dakota, and that's where she is today. So she asked if I could attend, and I said I'd be delighted to. She did go ahead and send over a report that I see that y'all got. So I, I'll just probably address the first paragraph, the first bullets, because that's sort of the meat here. We do still have that out-of-use handicap access toilet downstairs. I guess Mr. Gil came over and said that our $30,000 in donation is not enough to fix it. I invite any of you, should you want to come over and see the facilities, please come on down, it's right there in the main office, in front of the office manager's desk, and that is our handicap access toilet. So it's very difficult when we have guests in the building or participants in our program to have that comfort area. Mr. White, our Board of Director President, attended a meeting of presidents in if it had to land about expectations, improving budgets, and working across county lines. He's awesome, he's also a farmer, so he's got a nice little grape farm going on in Essex, so he's very committed to Essex County and to improve agriculture and education. Anita and everyone is working on their 2016 budget, and the goal is to hold to the request level. And here's something fun, we had a defensive driving class training, Cornell wants us to keep plugging away at updating our safety training and whatnot, so I'm also on the Farm Bureau of Essex County Board of Directors, and I got tasked to have a safety training, so my roles again collide. So I organized one for Cornell Cooperative Extension as well as Farm Bureau. We had 36 participants, that was as many as the instructor could take, I had a waiting list. Much to my surprise, I had several of my 4-H teenagers also attend, and their parents as well, so I had about eight from the 4-H community attend, too, which I didn't see coming, and they've asked if we couldn't host that five-hour pre-licensing class as well. I was like, wow, there, another opportunity. So those kids just get those ideas going, I just love it. I won't go through the rest of the report unless, just my favorite part.
You want to address the, talk about that handicap?
Yeah, I did, I talked to Anita about this, and clearly, it is an issue, there's, the bathroom that's there is currently not hooked to the town's system, which all toilets are supposed to be, they're not using it unless it's an emergency, but it does have to be done. I need to, I know Chris kind of looked at it and kind of indicated that he wasn't sure 30,000 was enough to do it, however, that's not any kind of a engineer's report, so I need to get an LOA from an engineer to go in, I talked to Anita about this, and we're going to do this, to get an estimate of a project, so that we can get those, at least get a handicap bathroom in there. They have 33,000 to work with, whether that means we have to kick in some additional, we may have to do that, but we'll see where we are, but we do need to do something.
Seeing to me, we have an obligation.
We do.
Gary, want to move it? Do we go to?
To get an LOA for the replacement of the handicap bathroom.
Ron Moore, you have a second. Any further discussion on that resolution, motion? All in favor?
Aye.
You know, Linda, I want to ask you one thing.
Ask her.
I have received a couple of correspondence in my time regarding monarch butterfly.
Really?
And I'm curious as to what the postural position is of the Cooperative Extension in terms of that program that some communities have, and that they are not cutting roadway areas and so forth along roadway, so that.
You bring up an excellent point. As, I also wear, besides 4-H Youth Development, I also wear a horticulture hat, and, again, as a farmer, and one of the main food sources of the monarch butterfly, as its role as a pollinator, is the milkweed. And you'll, as soon as you walk down the road, they're all blooming now, lovely smell, and the eastern population, or the, this corridor for the monarch butterfly migration, doesn't start till a little bit later. So if people can hold off mowing edges or strips in their gardens, in public areas, a long farm, waterways, whatever, that really does help not just the monarch butterfly, even monarch butterflies, the poster child basically for beautiful pollinators, but there's so many more that feed on that. I myself have let milkweed sprout in my front yard, and it's, it's very interesting just to walk by and see the number of pollinators in there. So there is programs, Cornell has like a citizen science program in, for the pollinators, but if anyone can just hold off and mowing that down, it does, they, they're all flowering now, it's another several weeks of that that will have, what I'm concerned of, I haven't visually seen a monarch yet, they tend to be a little bit later than that Midwestern corridor that goes down to Mexico. So we're several weeks behind, and with the amount of rain we received in June, the milkweed's doing great, I haven't seen the matchup with the butterflies. I don't know if they're far along in their.
I don't know if anyone else has had that, this may seem like a minor issue to most of you, but this is, this is cutting these along the edges of the highways, county highways, town highways, and so forth.
And I understand the blind spots that, you know, have to be mowed down and whatnot, and I understand that, but that's such prime habitat for so many pollinators. And I am a beekeeper myself, and, you know, all of this ties in, if you seed one butterfly, you're not seeing the 30 other pollinators that we have there.
Charlie?
I put milkweed in the same categories as a thurax, and I go after it very aggressively. That being said, I do have a quarter acre that I am allowed to grow only two, so that's the, I think, and I'm sure the people involved in that come to ours.
And I think, I think I see more and more people just leaving a little bit to go wild.
Mike?
Yeah, we're planning some milkweed on the outskirts of Albor, it's up there on the way stations.
Excellent.
They're, they're seeded, hopefully.
I just point this out to you all, because it may come up, your town board meeting.
And it's not just the pollinators, the pollinators leave to the birds, the birch, the songbirds, and you'll see, just by leaving that quarter acre, you'll see different birds come back that you hadn't seen in years, the bobolinks, the meadow larks, clovers, all these things that you didn't see before, so it's just, I thank you.
Any other questions, yes?
I am aware that Essex County has been targeted for a $50,000 agricultural planning grant. This has come from the Department of Agriculture. I am aware that because my neighbor has a notable position in the Department of Agriculture, he has more or less made it aware to me that that $50,000 is there, all you have to do is regiment yourselves into qualifying for it. That being said, there must be an agricultural planning board, of which I understand that the Agricultural District Board would qualify for. I know that there is a need for consultant services, specifically for young farmers who are not regimented into any specific style or category of agriculture. It's my understanding that this is not going to occur unless it is advocated by Cooperative Extension. I also believe that your office has been made aware of this.
Okay, it must be for the commercial horticulture. Okay, it must be for the commercial horticult, is it horticulture or livestock, do you know?
It is a consultant service.
It's a consultant service.
Now, if you, your administration wants to follow up on that, I can give you the name of the person who is delegated responsibility.
Oh, since I'm not familiar with that, I would love to have that name.
Okay.
I'm sure Anita and Lori probably are, but I can't speak towards it, so, but I hate to lose a $50,000 opportunity.
To be really motivated and promoting agriculture in Essex.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Mike?
You know, in reference to the mowing, being highways over 10 or 20 years, one law says that you must remove the weeds on the highway, so you put the, you know, person to kind of spot, if you skip a spot and there's a small deer in there, steps out in front of a motorcycle or something, and then you're in the, you didn't mow that area, so it makes it kind of tough.
It does.
And highways are pretend to say, don't mow this, or, you know, even though you know you should leave the milkweeds, but.
And I understand that, I mean, I, I myself, you know, I pull out of my driveway and I say, hmm, got to cut that back, you know, and everybody does, but it's, you know, there's got to be some balance in there, and I think just even private citizens just leaving just a little bit more of their own, it doesn't have to be on the edge by the road, it could be the side of the house the neighbors don't see, I don't, you know, I mean, it's something else, we could be creative.
Well, as like here, the lady who takes care of her flowers brought it to our attention, and that we saw all the areas on the outskirts, the golf course, and great place for her, you know.
Anyone else? Linda, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for having me.
Jim McKenna. Jim's son got married for the weekend. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. A couple of things, we do have a resolution for TPA, the Savage TPA agent for the county, Carol Joette, which serves in that position, as you all know, has moved to Virginia, and she's very thankful for the resolution that was sent by the county on that, we shipped that out to her last week. So I think we have a copy of that resolution.
Yeah, the resolution designated Jason Lawrence.
That's correct.
As the Essex County Tourism Promotion Agent.
Correct.
June 1st.
Yes, effective June 1st, and what that does, that allows us to access the matching funds through I Love New York.
Okay, a resolution to move Mr. Moore, with a second, Mr. Maryhugh. Any further discussion on that resolution? All in favor? Thank you.
Two other things I'd like to talk about quickly, one is the governor's having his third Atlantic Challenge this coming Sunday in Indian Lake, you know, it's gotten a lot of media attention to pass, hopefully will in the future, Chairman Farabee is going to be leading, leading the motorcycle ride this year, and Tom, are you going in there? You know, anybody else?
I'm not following the orders.
Uh-huh? So, I mean, I think that should be good, I don't know if anybody else is going, but hopefully, well, that's great, that's great, because that'll be going, it looks like they're expecting the normal attendance they've had for the last two years, they have 25 rafts for the rafters, and eight or nine other activities going on during that day. Just actually, I was thinking of, I have to go back, my son's waiting for a minute, part of the function, he got married over in Middlebury, and one of the functions was climbing up Snake Mountain over on Drummond, great view of Crown Point and also Port Henry from back there, it's pretty, it was actually pretty neat scene. The other thing I want to talk about is next Thursday, actually not this coming Thursday, the following, July 23rd, we have the Ironman Site Selection Committee for their World Championships in 2017. That event, you know, occupies, if we're successful in it, well, first of all, there was 40 RFP sent out from that three candidate cities in North America, or down to the final three, we're one of them along with Chattanooga, Tennessee, and also St. George, Utah. What that event means is it's, if we're successful in it, it happens the Wednesday through Sunday following Labor Day, which is traditionally a pretty quiet period, and on that Saturday of that week, it would be the Women's World Championships with 2,000 women competing, on Sunday would be the Men's World Championships with 2,500 men competing. What they're anticipating is about 90 nations represented in this event if we're success, if we get it, put that in relationship, the 1980 Olympics had 37 nations represented, so about 4,500 athletes, which generate about 15,000 to 20,000 spectators coming to the, our whole region during that time period. Ironman estimates, their estimates are about a direct spend of $15.4 million, what does that translate to the county for? Well, 4%, sales tax, 4% of $15,400,000 is $616,000, so it's got significant impacts there, occupancy tax would be about 154. So, I mean, and, so it's, it's a significant event, and we're working hard to try to get it, four towns participate in the race, which would be North Alba, Keene, Jay, and Wilmington. So it's, it's, we're hoping to create some excitement during the site visits, review of the area, what they'll be doing is they'll be taking a look at the swim course, they'll be riding the entire bike course and the entire run course, what we're, what we want, what our plan is at this time is to basically have some banners in each of the town, large, large ones that they go through, that basically say, "We welcome the site committee," and what we're hoping to coordinate with the supervisors and others is that we can sort of get some people there to sort of cheer, I think that adds a lot to it if we can, if we can do that. You know, the competition for this type of thing is pretty significant, and if we look at Chattanooga, their whole mission now is to do outdoor sports events to get that level of that city raised up, so we're going to try really hard for this for a couple of reasons, number one, the economics certainly work, but by being selected as the site for the 2017 70.3 World Championships, Ironman has a built-in marketing tool that runs around the world, so that we'll be tied in with that for two years and probably more international exposure for our area than anything else that we've been involved in in the last 30 years, so we're looking, we really want to, we're trying very hard to be successful in that. These events all come with costs associated with them, we've been working with the state on that, and we're, we're pretty confident that if we're selected, we're going to get some support from the state, and also, you know, events like this, sometimes it's, you know, you do this for Ironman, but it also drives infrastructure improvements sometimes around the county, so getting that, getting the state involved, and being such a global event, we think it'd be a very positive thing for our area. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jim, Mary, any comments, discussion or anything, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else come before this committee? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you.